...in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. I was talking about that. Got everybody here but John tonight, so we've got a quorum. On the irregular agenda, we're adding another item here between nine and ten. We're gonna talk about River's Edge a little bit. We'll have that in there, so we'll call that nine game. Anybody else got any other additions, corrections on this one?
No.
Motion approved, agenda with said, a lot of caution.
I take that back. I do have one correction to your consent agenda. Oh, never mind, don't come into the consent. Never mind. I wanted to make, it's in red on my sheet, so I want to make sure I.
So close that you have so far.
Alright, so.
Motion approved with said change.
Alright, so Brian made the motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Dave does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Now we're onto the consent agenda. Jimmy, you wanna stop over there?
Yep, so, uh, under F.I., we have the amount one oh four eight fifty seven sixty five. That's incorrect. It should be twenty-five thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and five cents.
Which one, Jim?
Under four F.I.
Okay, twenty-five.
There's what?
Nine seventy-eight.
I had an error in my cover letter when I sent it.
In this one?
Yeah, I have an error. You can see there, I doubled up the number by mistake. I had an error when I typed it. So, that second one there where it says one oh four whatever, should be twenty-five thousand nine seventy-eight point oh five. The total amount paid is the amount that one oh four eight five seven.
That's what's been paid to date.
No, that's what this estimate will be.
Oh, with the change.
Yep, yep. So, two-five-nine-seven-eight point oh five for that project.
And everything else is good? Jim?
Yes.
Do you guys have any questions on the consent?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna accept a motion from somebody to accept the consent agenda with the said change.
So moved.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Dave does a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Approved. Okay, it's council, special council meeting minutes from October night, so we got those squared away? Do they have any comments, questions on that? No, straightforward?
I guess my only question is, have we assisted that, wanna keep that moving to get the rezonance?
We have not talked to them yet on that. We will be contacting them soon, though.
Okay.
So.
No idea.
Okay, most of those amount, accept a motion.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Make some motion, Chelsea.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, special minutes are approved. Alright, from our council meeting on October twenty-first. That looked good unless you guys saw something in there I missed.
No, a lot of discussion.
Yep, there was.
Motion approved minutes.
Second.
Make some motion, Dave does a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Alright, public comment time. Anybody got anything you wanna talk about tonight? Anyone wants? Go ahead now.
I'm here, I have concerns.
Introduce yourself, please.
Yep, Amber Hilt. Um, I live out in the Adelman addition out there, and I called, um, last Wednesday, I believe, I spoke with a Shelley or a Shelby.
Shelby.
And I was told that the city administrator may or may not give me a call back at an unknown time. So, um, I have concerns about the Adelman addition out there and the street in front of our house. Basically, it doesn't drain. We have water sitting there year-round, and in the spring specifically, it gets pretty high, about a foot. And when it froze this last, what, Tuesday and Wednesday, because of the drain, because of the sumps that are coming out across the street, it was an ice skate rink around the whole corner of the street.
So you're located where in Adelman?
We are the north.
Northeast corner.
East corner, yep.
Yeah.
And so I guess I have safety concerns. Um, I watched kids trick-or-treat and pretty much go like this on the ice. Um, when my husband is out there snowblowing, he is on six inches of ice when he's turning his machine around. I'm scared he's gonna slip and fall. When we take our garbage out, we can't even take our garbage out without putting water boots on half the time. I'm pregnant. I don't wanna slip and fall on this, this winter. Um, the spring, when we had that rough foot of it, it would refreeze, thaw, refreeze. Every morning, we were dragging our vehicles across it. This is on the street, so this is not the property draining in the side. This is the city's street.
Jimmy, we looked at that one?
Rumorous times, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so what was this, what's the story on that?
Um, well, the ordinance by the city says that some pumps have to discharge to a rear yard drain, yard drain, or a curb and gutter, which they do out there. The problem is, Adelman's addition has valley gutters and no curb inlets, so they run and it's across the surface, and it's pretty much freezes, like you say, Amber, whenever it gets cold, because the sump pumps pump constantly. So, tried to alleviate this this year with the storm sewer project that got voted down by the residents, so that was gonna be our way of.
Right.
Keeping the water off of the street, but this isn't the only place where it happens. There's at least one or two other places where it.
Yep, 'cause I have another concern too, um, the accessibility, because if it starts freezing on the street, we all knew what happened in front of, um, the two-story, I won't name names, but the two-story White House last year. Um, how many inches, a foot plus of ice was out there in front of that? If this happens now in front of the street of my house, and it keeps slowly coming, is the snowblow, is the snowplow gonna go there? Am I gonna have ice chunks? Are we supposed to bust our backs getting the ice chunks? Are we supposed to break our snowblower with these ice chunks? Like, are we gonna be able to assess our driveway?
So Jim, is it the sump pump issue that's going on there?
Yeah, sump pumps pumping.
Okay. Um, and they've all been told that they're supposed to drain to the back.
Well.
I mean, I'm just wondering what's.
The attorney thinks that they should, there is an ordinance for that. I don't, I thought it was just.
I called like two years ago, and I believe that it goes, it's supposed to go to the street.
Yeah, that's typically, but.
Right.
Most places I've been.
If you have storm, storm drains.
Storm sewers, yeah.
Yeah. There's not, they are, they are not out there, correct?
Yeah, no, they're not. It's all.
Surface drainage.
It's all surface drainage.
Attorney forgot his book.
Oh, that figures, right? There's always that one time.
I'm almost positive the city has an ordinance that says you can't discharge sump pumps. They're causing health issues.
And I mean, thankfully, I mean, our neighbor right next to us, I mean, he turned his off, um, just yesterday, um, but he already told us, he's like, yeah, it's already pulling up in my back, so he's like, I don't know how long I can keep doing it back there. And I, I get it, because it's gonna pull up, it's pulled up in our backyard. It pulls up in our backyard the entire year, but if it's gonna cause a problem on the street, and I don't know if it's something that in order to get it to drain, it's the south, it doesn't drain south, is the problem.
Well, we just did drain, didn't we just do a project with the last year, this last spring?
What we.
To get those, no?
What we did is, we had a proposed, we had a proposed project. It was brought to the neighborhood, and the neighborhood, uh, voted on that. We were pursuing, doing improvements, which involved a series of inlet structures and storm sewer pipe to tie into the storm sewer for the seventy-sixth Avenue project. That was shot down. It was not, the neighborhood was very divided on that, so it was not, the project wasn't, that element of the project was not done, and storm sewer going up in Adelman's addition from the seventy-sixth Avenue project was removed from that project, because it was, the neighborhood wasn't in favor of doing that.
So at this point, our only real option is to tell the residents to stop pumping water in the street, 'cause there's not many other options at this point.
Then you run into where's the water gonna go if it's going to the back?
Right, and it, well, it's a hot water year, so it's.
We've gone through those before. Yeah, but where does the surface water go?
It's supposed to drain, it's supposed to drain to the east and into the south to seventy-sixth Avenue, and it's very flat, and it's all, like I said, surface drains. The city had tried to address this at one point in time by cleaning out from Drain Twenty-Seven all the way up to as far as they could in the Adelman addition. That was done two or three years ago. And then now there is storm sewer along that, that area, but, uh, it doesn't go that far, far east, because, because the Adelman's voted that part of it down, so it just still basically functions the same way.
So it's still, it's still gravity?
Yeah.
Gravity drain into that storm sewer that would take it to.
And then just runs down the north ditch into Drain Twenty-Seven.
But it's just not moving fast enough.
I mean, the only thing would be if the city would say you can't discharge to a, to a street, and then have, person have to discharge to their, their yard for the winter, kind of thing. But it's not uncommon for people to have it plumbed all the way to the back of the curb and then just let it.
If it is creating a safety issue, then, you know, we have to.
It does build up, yeah.
Have to pull and push it through back, back of the yard.
Can we go the other direction, that if it is creating a safety issue, and the best long-term fix is that drainage? Is that an approach we can take? I, I know that they voted it down, but we're gonna have citizens coming back here every, every year complaining about the same thing. The only way to fix that is to fix it.
Essentially, we have to, well, do we initiate or is our resident initiated?
Hold on a second, Lucas, go ahead.
So the, the ordinance for certain discharges of storm sewer water deemed a nuisance. Uh, no owner, occupant, or user of property therefore may discharge any storm water, groundwater, roof runoff, yard drainage, yard fountain, or pond overflow, or other surface runoff waters in such a manner, so as to allow the collection of the same on their property or other properties above proper drainage. Discharges of storm water, groundwater, roof runoff, yard drainage, yard fountain, or pond overflow, or other surface runoff waters by the use of such devices as sump pumps must be made directly into the storm sewer system of the City of Forests or drainage ditches which run there too.
Which is what it does.
That's all.
Which is not well.
Right, but it's up, but this should be for, it should go out the back and flow around, is what you're saying, right? Because it's the way that was.
Well, nothing says in that ordinance that it can't go to the front, into the curb and gutter, which is a considered part of the storm sewer.
But if it's gonna cause, if it's gonna start causing accidents or issues, we're gonna need some stuff to changes.
Right.
Yeah.
I know Public Works has had issue with that in past winters, so.
Okay. Let's just say, we're, we're gonna have to look into this a little bit more. I mean, I just, you know, yeah, probably the easiest way to handle this right now is try and get the water out the back. I know that's not ideal, but for right now, short of putting in a storm sewer system like we had talked about, I don't know, I don't know what other would be the, the best solution at this point.
We, we bet.
Because that's gonna keep it off the street, but that's, that was the point of what we were talking about.
Right, yes, and, and I, I agree with that, except two with the spring thawing. I mean, that's, that's an issue too, you know, that's aside from the sumps even too, that's just natural gravity coming our way, and it sits on the street. We bought a four or five hundred dollar water pump last year so that we could pump it south where it was supposed to go, but I can't expect my husband to be out there every day, every morning before we're, and, and we can't, we won't be able to pump it every morning when it's half-froze. So, I mean, the sumps is only gonna help a little bit. Or, or, excuse me, redirecting.
No, I understand, I understand your situation here, but like I said, we're too late this season to start doing any magic with, you know, bringing in any heavy equipment and doing any work. So, I think right now, so we're gonna have to try and let folks know, you know, that the sump's gonna have to go to the back of the house and not on the street. Um, yeah, we'll have to look at that. But we'll talk with the engineers about this, and just see what, again, it'll have to get addressed next spring, because right now, we're out of time for any construction magic on that.
That could be a, a neighborhood thing, right? This needs to be a neighborhood recommendation as well, so you can contact some of the neighbors to see if there's.
We've already gone, I mean, I think we, the whole neighborhood, half the neighborhood was in here. It got voted down, they're not gonna, it, it's not gonna be a majority vote, because it doesn't affect the majority of the property owners out there. Their water comes our way, which if it would drain properly.
It does affect them.
And, but if it would drain properly, I wouldn't have an issue.
Right.
You know, and I mean, I even understand with it pulling up in my backyard, and if it doesn't go south, I was told that that's a civil suit that we've got, but this is the street. The street, I can't do anything about the street.
And as a solution, like, like you mentioned, and you brought up, this is brought up, uh, late spring, early summer? No, actually, it was last spring here.
I've brought it up a couple years prior to.
Yeah, but the actual project was formulated, all of that, the city has engineered, the city engineer has, uh, designed it all out, the solution of how this could be remedied. It is a substantial project. If it was a smaller scale project, we could be able to say, hey, we could tackle this out of different funds, but it is a.
It was a bigger project.
It is a bigger project, and that's why we're looking at what the community, what the neighborhood's saying, you know, with these improvements.
Right, and that's why we're thinking of kind of.
It would have some cost type.
Whole seventy-six things if you.
Cause there would have been, there would have been considerable cost savings with the seventy-sixth project.
Okay, alright.
So that's, that's where we're at on that one, though.
Okay, we're gonna have to look into it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else got anything you wanna talk about? Go ahead. Introduce yourself.
I'm Patrick Capp, eighty-two forty-one, Memory Lane. I'd just like to hear if there's any update on, uh, River's Edge issues.
On, uh, it's coming up on the agenda, nineteen. You come, come up here a little bit.
Um, if I, just a minute, I'd like to.
You got a minute?
All I, all I wanna say is, I understand that there's a long-term issue, and that has to be solved, and it takes time, and it's gonna take a little bit of effort to get to that point. I personally think a gate valve would be the cheapest and probably the best way to go. This type of flooding doesn't happen that often, but I don't understand why, and, and I also understand that the river is going down very soon. They're cutting the amount of water that's being discharged, but it's gonna take a long time for the river to actually appreciably go down. Um, I mean, while the ditches are full of water, and I'm very concerned about what happens if, um, that's just allowed to be that way for the whole winter. Um, if we have some ditches that are five feet deep, that's a solid block of ice, what's gonna happen in the spring then? That's, that's, I'm, I'm concerned about. Um, people said they didn't want to plug the culvert and pump the water across to keep, you know, the water from coming back again, um, for reasons like, if we got another rain or something like that, it'd have no place to go. But I don't know that that really, in the point intended, holds water. Um, I think it needs to be dried up now, even if you got some torrential rain, um, coming later on, um, then the sandbags or whatever that's plugging that culvert could be pulled out of the way. I just think it, it would make sense to, to pump that out now, and of course, there'd be a long-term solution down the road, so hopefully you don't have to do something like this, but to just leave that water there, I, I don't understand, 'cause I don't think it's just gonna go down the river. It's gonna take a lot of time for that to all empty out, so.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, anybody else, anything you wanna talk about? Alright, we'll move on then to the sheriff's update. Lindsay, you've got the.
This month was pretty slow, we had a hundred and thirty-six calls, five crashes, which were up with the lovely weather we've had. One reckless driver, one juvenile complaint, three animal calls, three alcohol-related, one was an impaired person around the area of Big Erbs, uh, one DUI that got called in, but we didn't find him, and then a DUI on Nelson Drive. Um, four medicals, thirteen citations, forty warnings, zero parking tickets, and zero drug-related. Uh, this number includes six calls related to traffic complaints, as well as twenty-five calls for deputies attempting warrants. There were two burglaries this month, one at a residence and the other at the storage units. Crashes, oh, I already said that, just remember to drive safely with the upcoming winter weather.
So how's the traffic been from here to the roundabout, and then from roundabout north? Is the people slowing down, or?
Yeah, I was actually just talking. I've stopped one car speeding and then, just the other night, they're doing fifty-seven and a forty-five.
So I just wonder, you know, I know.
Been pretty good.
Right, they had the reminder out there, I know that tracks were, I mean, did they notice anything on there that people were trying?
I haven't heard, so.
Okay.
And the person I stopped was an out-of-towner, Silver Drive person, so.
Right, and that's the thing, some of those folks probably remember what it was, fifty-five or seven.
And that's what they told me, they're like, well, it used to be fifty-five.
Yeah.
Not anymore, sorry.
Right, and that's the thing, people forget.
Yeah, well, I mean, it was a, other than the burglaries, it was a very.
Any more information on the burglaries?
Not that I've heard. Um, the one at the house seemed targeted, I would assume, but I, I mean, I don't know. So, I know investigations have involved them.
Okay.
We'll go from there, so.
Yeah, hopefully I'll get any more of those.
So none, none of the crashes were in the roundabout area?
Nope.
Okay, right, that was one of them. I've seen, I've seen some people kind of ducking in and out, not using the lanes like they should on the roundabouts, so I'm curious of, that's gonna be when we get more traffic with school and so forth, things here?
Right.
So it's just interesting to see patterns.
And there were no injuries, so.
Okay.
It's good.
Mm-hmm, alright, thanks.
Yep.
Russell and Keith, you guys come on up. Introduce yourselves.
Huh?
Introduce yourselves.
I'm Keith Zuchel with the Horace Lions.
Russell Berg with the American Legion and Post in Horus here. On behalf of the Legion, we'd like to present a check for five hundred dollars to go towards the purchase of the flags and, uh, flag holders on the new light poles.
Okay, thank you.
And on behalf of the Horus Lions, also presenting a five hundred dollar check to go for the same purpose of getting the flags and brackets and whatever taken care of for the next year.
Great, well.
Thank you, guys.
On behalf of the city, I wanna thank you guys for doing that. Thanks for us.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. They'll look nice when we get them up on the poles there.
Okay, just wanna add really quick, um, I was going to do the steering updates, but regarding the flags, uh, flags, we anticipate to have them go up, uh, probably Wednesday, so along Congress Seventeen, along all the streetlights, as many flags as we can get up, we will. Uh, that's our plan, so you've seen some that have been up for a while. Uh, our plan is to put those up during the different times, like Fourth of July, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, patriarch holidays like that. Um, but we'll be having them up for about a week, and then once we take those down, they'll be Christmas decorations, so, yep.
Perfect, good.
Thank you.
Alright, so then we'll move on to the ninety, River's Edge thing.
Can I just ask one question? Uh, Brenton, the lights in town now are, have been replaced, right?
Yes.
They look nice.
Yep.
So everything looks uniform all the way from the wrong.
Yep.
Through, this is very nice.
Yeah, it does. Okay, so on the ninety, River's Edge.
Okay. Lucas, if I'm missing anything, please expand, or just update on, uh, uh, update on River's Edge. Uh, we've been looking into the drainage concerns, what the, where the issue really could lie, where the city's role plays within this. Um, the project was annexed, or the, the development was annexed into the city after the improvements and the development occurred. So the city had no control, no say over how the infrastructure was installed. So, ditches are cut, anything like that, that city didn't have say. That was between developer, engineer for the developer, contractor, not the city. If the city had involvements to improve this, one way this could occur is through a petition for improvements. We've seen this with other projects, um, before, but where the residents can petition for improvements, to request change, you know, the improvements to occur. Also, what that would do is, you know, could set it up for a special assessment district. Not guaranteeing there would be costs, not guaranteeing residents would be assessed for the costs. The city may take on some of the costs, depends on what the project is, depends on the city's financial abilities to handle it. Um, we're looking into the options, talking with Jim, he's, has a couple ideas of how we can help improve the drainage conditions there, but short-term fix-wise, there really isn't a short-term fix. The river is going down. If you went by there at all over the weekend, the river is starting to go down, yes. Um, it's been going down even today again, I believe. I don't know the exact amount, how much it's been going down, from, from, well, I could tell over the weekend, it was going down about four to five inches from, just from driving by, you could see. Um, the river will be up higher than normal throughout the winter, from every indication I've seen, I don't know if Jim has seen anything different, but that's 'cause they're draining, uh, uh, over by Jamestown, Valley City, that area, those dams are full, or pretty full. We're not far off from where we were spring flood-wise in the fall. That's normally not a good condition, this is unprecedented. So, we're working towards those solutions, however, that's the city's involvement from everything we could find out, like I said, the pro, the development was annexed after it was built. We can help out, but it would be through petitions or council direction, how you guys would, if there are issues beyond that, that is where it gets between, on, on the civil side. So, like I said, not the news everybody wants to hear, but that's what we found looking into the issue. Also, short-term fix, we've been looking at the river going down. If we were to plug the culvert, that could freeze in, there's no guarantee there would be a seal anyways, we'd be having pumps pumping that ditch down frequently, and if we have events happen, rain events or anything, in the meantime, it's going to fill right back up.
So what is it right now? Is it just a platform?
There is nothing there, there's nothing.
It's open, yeah. It's open to the river. There is a drop in the manhole that's just up, right at the right-of-way line on the east side, there's about an eight-inch drop in the manhole, and that was designed that way on purpose. I did reach out to the design engineer, I had to go to the last meeting that we had, and he said that that outlet pipe never reset thought that it was too low. That was when it was brought up at the last, and he comes to me, it was too low, and he said he'd never heard of that. But, um, he said that there was the drop in there on purpose, um, and it is a manhole in there, so I was thinking it was a manhole tee, but it's actually a legitimate manhole. So, one of the things that we're looking at doing is utilizing some of the existing infrastructure that's already there, it's only a couple years old, and trying to retrofit a slide gate or sluice gate on the inside of that manhole structure, maybe take the top off and put a hatch on the top, so we can access that and use it kind of as a two-chambered pumping system, put a weir wall in it and pump across it back into the river, so. Um, right now, the water for the most part, except for Patrick lives, is contained to the right-of-way, the ditches are in the right-of-way, the water's in that. It is breaking out on, on his side, right through his property to the west, and then kind of meandering on into a field, but for the most part, it's contained to the ditches in that, that area of River's Edge.
Sort of these potential, um, changes that could be done this fall, or at least something that's a next year?
It's a next year.
With, with the, with the height of the river right now, basically the river is With the, with the height of the river right now, basically the river is at the level of the ditch. And if you plug that with sandbags or whatever else, I I don't know how effective that's gonna be with just, you'd have to put a lot of sandbags in there to get it to seal off. And then try to pump on it, you're just taking the head pressure off, and you're gonna have more coming back at you, or salmon coming back at you, so. Um, if the, if the river would, would drop and it would drain, it would, we could probably do something with it this year. Maybe not, it is getting cold, and some of that is concrete work, it may be difficult, but uh, the outlet structure, or the outlet, which is a flared end right now, was supposed to be placed at the normal water level for the Cheyenne. That's what the design engineer told me, is they placed it at or about the normal level for the Cheyenne. Now, you're gonna see in the, in the, uh, upcoming agenda that it was a hundred and, hundred and seventy-eight percent more precipitation than the last four months than than, uh, normal. For July, August, September, and October, the normal precipitation is nine point two four inches. This year, it's sixteen point four nine, for an increase of seven point two five inches. That's according to the uh, National Weather Service that weather improvement provided. So this is the tenth wettest September on record, so. There's a lot of water everywhere.
Okay, Russ, go ahead.
This may have been an next after, but this was all through the city. Everything, because they're extraterritorial, they had to meet the, uh, they had to, they had to come through planning and zoning, they had to come through the city council. Everything had to be approved. I will tell you that the engineering is bad. Okay. And it's not these guys.
No, I know.
Okay. The city, uh, owns this one from day one. Okay.
Well, and all this evidence, this ramp. The issue with drainage that the city has is the city can do elevations when that development is originally constructed, and you can have all the elevations set exactly as they were designed. But then, there's the construction of the home that messes with drainage, the different elevations, there's landscaping that can be done that messes with the elevations, and when they install utilities, that can change the elevations. So all that stuff also plays into uh, how it drains, and the city can't control any of those items. And so that's why the city always pushes this as a civil matter that's happening out in the addition, same thing for the issues of drainage and the land gets put on the city. But the city cannot always be the one that is addressing these matters five years down the road, ten years down the road, what have you, because it's not necessarily always in the city's hands to take care of this stuff. So.
Okay.
So Jimmy, your point is there's really no short-term solution until we get the water to go down on the river. So the best-case scenario is-
And then we need to look at options and how to fund those options. That's where-
So there, there's really, the point is there's no short-term fix to the problem. It's gonna be, continue to monitor, but design a potential solution that would solve this after we can get access to it. Now, could that happen mid-winter so that we could prevent that from that, you know, gate valve or something like that to prevent water flowing back over, over, you know, next spring?
Uh, like I, like I said, it does involve concrete. If we would do one of the options, just concrete weir wall in the, in the structure, it does have concrete, and there's, it's not a real large amount, and that you do get into issues with cold weather concreting, especially small amounts. So.
At a minimum, we could design, we could get a design prepared-
Yeah, we could have a plan ready, and ready to go to get, go, go out as soon as we can, yeah.
I think at this point, that's the next step, is to say, okay, what is a proposed solution?
Yep.
And then from there, now that's when we go to either residents, or we figure out how we're gonna fund the reparations, so. I think that's one of our next steps, is just come up with a-
And one of, one of the solutions that has been brought up by numerous people is putting us a flat gate on the end of the culvert right now. And last year, there was an excessive amount of ice on the river. And that would be susceptible to being ripped off, ice action. There was a lot of concern with ice jams in the last flood fight, so. There's always that concern that that wouldn't necessarily be the long-term solution, just bolting on a a flap gate and then having it get tore off or damaged or something, so it didn't even work anyways, so. Trying to look at a little more permanent solution.
Because a permanent solution will probably involve a lift station.
Well, that is one area, is to have, put some form of a lift station, a pump station there, yeah.
For this scenario, because this is going to happen again, where there's another high-water situation.
Affordable, be it affordable pump or permanent pump, something, something along those lines, yes. Especially as the addition builds up, because as it builds up, the water's gonna be more and more contained to the ditch, especially where Patrick lives.
So at this point, I guess, you know, I'm looking for input here from you guys, do you think we should at least get authorize Jim to draw up some designs for options to consider?
I mean, it's, so we get an idea what we're dealing with here.
Right, I mean, we gotta look at some costs. We gotta look at some costs and, and options to, you know, maybe a gate valve is one option, but not the best, has its pros and cons, but you know, other more longer-term solutions. So.
Options and costs.
So, I think I would make a motion that we authorize interstate engineering to, to draw up some, draft some plans and specs for drains, stormwater drainage. Trying to word it correctly. Stormwater drainage of Rivers Edge development.
Did I say that correctly? I second that.
Okay. Brian made a motion due to the second. Any other conversation on that, or? Okay. I made a motion due to the second, so vote on it, Tom.
Yes.
Dave, Chelsea?
Yes.
Marlon?
Yes.
Okay.
And I guess I just wanted to say, you know, as far as Russ was saying, that the city has been involved from the beginning more of like a council side of it, where they are approving, but the city didn't have an engineer on this project.
All right, so Jim, let's, uh, let's get that spoke started.
Let's make a statement, the, the engineer on record is Houston Engineering, correct?
Correct.
Who was the city-
Who was the city engineer at that time?
Correct.
Houston Engineering, let's make that statement so it's clear. I'm not gonna beat around the bush about it, so we need to address it. So. Something that's of the past, and we gotta take on it.
Correct.
Right?
All right. So, move along here, number ten, Brent, you got that one?
Next item for you is we received a petition requesting, uh, improvements for the Southdale addition, first addition. My understanding, Jim, you received this, if you could elaborate, but it was mainly for all the infrastructure within that?
Yep, it's, this is a petition-
Improvement district, or-
Petitions for improvements from New Horizon Homes LLC, this is for the Southdale Farms First Edition. They have, uh, submitted their, the standard petition, and it says, uh, we, we attach to this petition, the petition and deed of the land, we also like special act, special assessments for the improvements. Planned for ninety-three bedroom units and twin home lot and eighty-five single-family lots. Uh, this is the area north of, north of Seventy-Sixth Avenue, east of, east of County Road Seventeen, so. Um, what we'd be asking to, to, tonight is basically just to direct me to prepare the report and look at establishing the boundary for the district. So, at the next meeting, we would be able to create the district and start the improvement process, so. That's all, that's all we're looking for on this one. The developer does want to get going on it, obviously, to, and get it out early next year for construction in two thousand and twenty, so.
All right, so we're looking for action, I know, basically-
Yep, just dur-
Just the resolution, direct me to engineer to prepare a report.
Okay.
So moving.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, second, Chelsea makes a second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Um, and then, as part of that, we did, they did have, um, they would like a proposal from us, the developer would, for our services, I guess, they think we've usually had a courtesy of asking you before we've done the work for private developers, they do want a special assessment, so it wouldn't be out of the ordinary for the city engineer to do it, so. I guess it's a, if you guys, like I say, we have asked for, as a courtesy, just to work on some of these projects, so. We are here to represent the city first, but we're just kind of like, you know, if you have any concerns or something on that, so.
Okay. We've done it before.
Yep.
Okay. That's all we have on the petition for improvements, I think you got the next one, okay, Brent?
Yeah, the next part of this, related to Southdale Farms, is I'm trying to make sure I find the right one for you. If you look at, it says A-ten, uh-
ACC.
It'd be a plat. And actually, it's, I don't know if, that probably won't help for the discussion, no, never mind. Uh, this would probably be the most helpful, but in talking with the developer, they're asking for consideration of one element uh, for the, for dedications of land for public facilities, public use. It's often used for, uh, parkland dedications, anything of that nature. What they're asking for is consideration of the council to allow four acres of land to be dedicated for the schools, for elementary school site. The elementary school site would have ten acres total, six acres the school district would purchase. And then the four acres, they're asking for consideration of being the land dedication as part of their dedications that they're required to do in the development. Originally, what was our understanding was this dedication would be to the park district, and then it'd be a shared area where the school would put improvements there. The mayor and I, we had a developer on Friday, and the developer expressed that this would actually be a dedication to the school. So the school district would be responsible for those improvements, or any costs tied to that land. So it would just be that they're asking for four acres of that to be considered as part of the dedications tied to, like, Southdale First Edition or Second Edition.
So the total of the school will have ten acres?
They would have ten acres, the school would buy six acres. They would get additional four that would count as land dedication for the developer, and the school district would get that as a dedication from, through the city's process. This, the latest versions of, uh, where parkland would be, and Justin can, i- if, Justin might be able to expand more from what he's seen from the park district, is the park district would like to see a more substantial park on the south end of the elementary school site. Um, at least, that's the last indications I've heard from the developer and from the park district. But by doing this, it would be, that four acres would be adjacent to the park and the school district, but it could be a shared area, so it could be, the public could use like the playground, things like that. And you see this common in other areas, like in West Fargo, you'll see where that there'll be a pretty good-sized playground right next to a school, and it's actually a parkland or open for park use, so. Um, but that developer's asking for consideration of that. Uh, that would help in identifying also how much land dedication we have to work with. Uh, for working with the park district, working with developer and the city. So we're looking to see if the council is receptive to having that be considered, or if you want to say no, developer would not count as part of your dedications. So we're looking for feedback, we're looking for action, if you want to take action on that. If you have any questions, I-
To me, it just seemed like a natural fit, we've got that four acres right there, and, you know, school's gonna be able to populate it. So this park work doesn't have to do that, but it will still turn into a park area, it can be used by public.
Yeah, our concern was keeping it to where the park district doesn't have the liability of that land, any special assessments tied to it, the school district to have that. And same thing city-wise, we wouldn't have that.
So, Justin, this has been brought up with the park district, and they're aware, and-
Well, they just wanted some direction, they, uh, I mean, they would like it much. In the sense that you guys are given a four acres of park dedication, which you have to have to do, so I don't know if it'll be- They'd like the positive of that, that they wouldn't have to pay for the actual equipment and stuff. And the important thing is that we will get, that those four acres, the ten-acre school site will be, so we won't be discussed about that, so I mean, you know, we do it a little bit different than West Fargo, but I mean, this is a different scenario, so I mean, it's, I mean, my honest opinion, I mean, the park's gave a little bit of a, the worst deal, but it is what it is, so I mean, it's, you gotta look at the general picture, so I get it.
I think it makes sense, if the park's land is adjoining to this. You know, if it's a playground at a school that's not connected to the other acres that's dedicated to the park, then it's a little less useful to the park, but that is it.
The only difference, like in West Fargo, is that it's two separate transactions, the school site has ten acres, that's theirs, and the park were next to them and put separate. Where this is different, where you have to take the four acres and give them credit for it, so I mean, it's, it's kind of helping the developer more than the park, so.
That's what I wanted to make sure of, is that, so if in this development, we're asking for X dollars or X, X, um-
Cash and loa.
Cash and loa, above dollars from a dedication to a park or public or with park. We're taking these four acres and stating this is part of his allotment, and he's deeding it to the school for a dollar, and stating he has a value of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that he's giving, that would go against his cash and loa or land.
Well, it would typically, it would be viewed as land dedication, so it'd be four acres of-
Okay.
Of that, so it wouldn't, we wouldn't really look into the cash value, we'd be looking into the land, just flat land, because the dedication requires X amount of land.
Yep.
And then if they don't want to do all that land, or a portion of it, or whatever, then they can offset that with the cash and loa rate of X number of dollars per square foot. So, it, it's looking at it just from the land angle.
Okay.
But, uh, it does, you know, it is one of those where the city could say, no, we're not going to allow that. Uh, dedications won't be allowed for that purpose. Or you could say, yes, you can. It could fall under the public facilities angle within the dedication ordinance. That ordinance is mainly geared towards city and parks infrastructure, or parks land. Uh, but like I say, it could fall under that angle from being public facilities per se. It is another government entity.
Park dedication, so now the fact that the park is being deeded-
Eighteen, yeah.
So it's basically a decided decision.
Yeah.
But my question is, so we're deeding this to the school. We all said, oh, the school's in agreement, that kind of stuff, putting up a, putting up a playground or whatever, do we have that in writing? Because this school, this school may not happen for five to six years.
You could require that-
Which all of us could be different, and there, we know there's gonna be a different business manager, and there might be somebody different. If this isn't in writing, there's no guarantee that the park district gets a playground that's shared, it's just-
Yeah. You would require-
It's four acres given to the public schools, correct?
Yeah, you would re-
I'm not saying they're gonna do anything wrong, but that is true, it's just four acres given to the school.
Yes, you could require that within the developer's agreement, and that require agreement outlining conditions for the land's use.
Okay.
Yeah, you could do that.
Russ, you had a question.
You could do that.
The question I have is, you're talking about, okay, first of all, uh, Block Five, Lot Two is going to the park. That's four point six acres. We're not discussing that at all.
No.
We're discussing four acres of Block Five, Lot One, four of the ten. Okay. Now, I'm hearing this differently than I'm, I'm, I'm understanding this differently than you are, I think. That four acres, all they're looking for, unless I'm mistaken, is they want that to come off some of their land dedication. It doesn't mean that the school is gonna do anything park-wise on that land.
That's what I'm-
Well, I was gonna ask, how did it come up, did the school ask him for it?
The school district and the developer approached the city requesting that. And, like I said, if you allow that, you can have that within the developer's agreement. You can also ask them, stand alone agreement of, here are the conditions tied to this. You can put conditions onto that. Saying that this is what the land would be used for.
So this warranty deed is basically one step, but then there's the developer's agreement that needs to be drafted up, that has yet to be drafted or submitted.
Yeah. The developer's agreement is- Developer's agreement, the school site, the land, is part of the second edition for the plat. So, that, that would be included within the developer's agreement for that. We're, we're just asking to see where the council is feeling towards a dedicate, land dedication being used towards the school versus parkland or city facilities or anything like that. So, looking for your reception.
The developer, it's easy to make out the best. The school would be secondary, because if it was on park, they would just cut us a check for extending my grant in the parks, so, yeah, by far the, the, the biggest benefit's developed by far, so that's still, I mean, it's, but-
What we do, what we, the point I'm making is that, that, that extra four acres, they has nothing to do with park. That only has something to do with land dedication. Not that it's gonna have anything to do with park, playground, or anything else on that school. That's still all school land.
Right, that's what I'm stating, is that-
It's just a neighbor transaction, basically, they're trying to get the four acres of credit, it's just a-
They're just a-
It's a- I know, but if, if the discussion with somebody has been that we get all these benefits, the park gets this, gets this land, it's gonna be used for a playground, and it's shared, and this and that, that is not written down anywhere, it's exactly what you said, it's just four acres given to the school. If that is written somewhere and put into an agreement, because that is what's been discussed as the benefit of this, then that's a different story that we can hold water to, but if that's not-
And that would be where-
Not to put your pun about the water earlier.
Like I said, is, it would be within developer's agreement.
Okay.
And you would, you could have conditions tied to it.
So can we, is that something you're looking for us to board on?
We're, we're just looking to see, are you receptive to having a four acres count? And then if you want conditions, we can come back with conditions in, within a developer's agreement.
Right.
If you don't want to go that route, if you want to say, no, that does not count as dedication, then the developer has to go back to the drawing board on that part, or figure out the dynamic with the schools, West Fargo Public Schools, or elementary site. And then also, they would be- And then also, they would be, their dedication requirement in reaction, in. Working with the city and park board for park board's request would be a different amount, like Justin said, twenty-two acres instead of eighteen.
Right, that's what I was thinking is, it's basically we fighting for the park board to get more land from the developer than what they would get otherwise. So, I guess from your standpoint, you know, what, how do you feel about that?
Well, I would be careful of setting a precedent with each developer, cause you get sort of cut in the park stuff way, cause I mean, that's one fifteen at West Fargo, the city on park, they've been at a lack in ways. They stick to, and that's one reason that we've got five hundred and thirty acres of parks, because the, the city said, hey, we want green space, we want, you know. But then I see your side where sometimes you need it to jumpstart that development. So, I mean, I get both, I, I get, I get the bigger picture, it's obviously the park person, I would say, hey, you know what? The policy, the policy, stick to the ten acre school site, the park, you get full point of acres, but, you know, I'm obviously biased, so I get the other side though, so.
Right.
And that's why they're looking for a direction from the council.
My concern is you're just, unless there's ways to make sure that it's done to what there's a benefit to both, you're just giving four acres to the school.
But it's in the school's best interest to follow through to either provide that as some, there's going to be some playground, if it's an elementary, there will be some playground equipment there.
Correct, but is it shared or is it owned by the school? And the school has, you know, school district in the past, you know, all of our, all of our schools are publicly funded, but to get space in the gym or time in the gym is all restricted. Is all driven by these types of things, the same thing could occur to that playground unless it is shared with a park district. So, I, I'm, I'm concerned that if we don't put any boundaries on this, we're just giving four, four acres. I don't have any issue with giving the four acres, cause it's a benefit to the whole development. I just wanna make sure we put something on the end to make sure that it's used for the right purpose.
But I still think that could be done in.
As long as we can do that, right.
Lucas, you had a.
I was just gonna say, I think it should border the park's land, you know, the playground should be next to the park's land around the other side.
Lucas, you had something?
So, so you can address it in your improvement district agreement as a condition, you can do it as plat dedication. Uh, when you go through your planning process, you can put a condition on there as well. And another thing, the park district has already created an agreement for a different development with the school district. So, I would just push or make that maybe one of your conditions, that the park district and the school have to develop an agreement that the park district can utilize that four acres for park purposes. But then that, that way, it also uh, puts a connection on the park board to that chunk of land that they have vested interest in it through that agreement. You know, the agreement between the park district and the school. Instead of the city trying to worry about, you know, whether or not that condition is satisfied, those two entities can have an agreement between themselves and enforce it to that.
The school isn't gonna wanna have four acres of park on their land. Okay, you know how small ten acres is? I live on it, okay? They're gonna need parking lot, they're gonna need, uh, they're not gonna tie it.
So, what was the request then?
It's just a paper transaction, but they get, all their school sites are the same, it's just a matter of they're gonna put a half acre playground. So, West Fargo, Freedom, Legacy, and Brooks Harbor are on park district land, but it's the school paid for the improvements. I, and Fargo Independence over by the four doctors in Osgood, it's on school, it's on Fargo School District land and the park will pay for that. So, it, it, it's just, it's, it's all paper transaction, they're, they're not gonna mess with their site or anything, it's, it's all of the four acres, it, that will.
But the four acres isn't fully used then for park?
Yeah.
Right, is what you're stating, is what you're stating.
The bottom line is, you guys wanna give this four acres to the developer, I mean, that's the bottom line, cause the school site's gonna be the same. It, they'll, they'll put on the, a, a, a quarter, a, a half of an acre on the school site regardless if it's on the parkland or the, on the school site. So, they're not literally taking four acres and building four acres of playground. It's only gonna be half an acre of, of playground and.
See, that's, that's what it was just pitched as though, that's, that's my side, is that it's.
That, that was what I explained to the mayor and I.
That's not what they've done the last four school sites that we've done with, is, is, so. I'm just going off of what we've done and that's not how.
Okay.
Yeah. Like I said, we're looking for where you guys are at, if you want to say or not, or if you wanna say you have to have written proposal. If you wanna have more details, or if you wanna say no.
Well, at this point, if, I mean, you're looking for approval of this transaction. Are you looking for us to prove it now or just?
We're looking for, we're looking for being able to give the developer and the park board feedback, so that way, all the parties know if you're receptive to this or not. If you're not receptive to it, then we're able to say, nope, land dedication's going to have to be twenty-two acres.
If the school is wanting these four acres, shouldn't somebody from the school be speaking and saying why they wanna take it from us?
Well, from us or?
The developers.
Explain some of this, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry I got the time wrong.
I'll blame it on the time change. Okay, so we're, we're talking about what we talked about on Friday right now.
Yep, okay.
If you guys got some question, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself.
Okay, um, I'm Chris Mack and representative for uh, the New Horizon Homes. And I got some, so, I guess. Uh, Mark is supposed to be here too, um.
I suppose he's retired now, so he's gonna, he'll pull that.
Here is what you guys approved. Okay, the sixty-fourth right here. And then what does that change um, per direction with the park? Yes, there, and what their requests are. So, um, I guess, um. When this plat kinda first started in February, um, January of nineteen. Um, from what I understood, there was a discussion with, hi.
Mark, we're just getting into it, so good timing on your part. Will you like?
So, there, there was a discussion with the developer, the school district and the city. And I don't know if it was just Brenton or who was all in that meeting. Um, and basically, the way um, the school has ten, well, we're proposing as a ten acre parcel to the school. And then um, with the, the latest version, um, that uh. We worked with the park district, uh, it's a thirteen acre park, cause they wanted a larger park. Now, what, what we originally had approved is the, the smaller park for the um. The uh, preliminary plat. And now what we're proposing is a larger park and the ten acre school site. And forty percent of the school site is public space. Um, so what, what the, the developer is uh, asking for um, the, a four acre reduction. Um, to the entire area plan, which I included. Um, so I believe twenty-two, it shows on the left of the, on that area plan, or on the right. It kinda shows that twenty-two acres is what's, or twenty-three point four acres is what's required. And the developer is asking for a four acre reduction due to um, the four acres um, that's gonna be public space from that school lot. Um, and I guess that is what, where did I put my other sheet there? That is what the developer's asking, and I know there are other um, school um, plots that have been treated like this. I know uh, Brooks Harbor is one of them. I don't know, I'll, I, I'll let you talk, Mark. Um, I know there's other West Fargo's schools that we've done this type of a, a, a reduction, I guess, in total. Uh, park district dedicate, uh, dedication, I guess, so.
So, you guys had some questions?
Um, and.
Well, for this, for this size of development, what is a typical? And I'm looking at this, what is a typical park portion that we allocate?
Ten percent.
Ten percent.
Ten percent.
Yep.
Or cash and loo, or combination. It all has, or a combination of.
So, I mean, you, and there is some parkland in, in the first edition.
Half acre.
That's a half acre in the first edition. So, I mean, for this, what, what is the total acreage of this whole?
Yeah, so you've got thirteen point three seven acres in this large park and you've got a half acre here, but you're saying there's twenty-three, so where's the other acreage of the park?
So, what, what, what we're proposing is uh, five point seven acres of cash and loo. Um, and then, um, and then the thirteen point seven, the four point, or the, the point four acres for that pocket park. That, that's gonna be used for the first phase, um, that's kinda why uh, park district wanted that smaller park for the, cause it's gonna be about five years for the school. And uh, by the time we get sixty-six in.
Right.
Um, and um, and then minusing the, the four acre reduction due to the public space that will be on the school lot.
What's the four acres?
Yeah, I think the main question is, and the school can answer this, is, so it's ten acre site. Does, does the school site plans change if the four acres of park credit is applied or not? Cause that's what this is all boiled, boiled, boiled down to. So, are, are you guys gonna design that site differently if there's on paper four years of park dedication, credit towards the developer or not? Cause really what we're talking about is, does the developer get four years of park credit, cause it doesn't affect you too much at all, correct?
Right, the school site would.
It's the same regardless.
Yeah, that, we're requesting a ten acre site. Ultimately, what you're hearing from, I believe in this request, the request from the developer to, in a sense, expand your definition of, of public dedication to include a portion of the school site, four acres of it. So, that, you know, you're pointing this us to, to um, public dedication, primarily to pass it and then park's dedication. Um, with the, the high school, middle school site, you did expand the definition beyond parks, including some things like the pond and road and cheap right of ways. As well as some portion of the specific two departments. So, really, I think in the end, this proposal definitely from the developer is looking at that definition of. Maybe you're right, essentially that four acres would be associated with the school.
So, it doesn't benefit you either way if it's four acres of park then or not? This is a purely solely developer. There's no upside on your end, or is there?
In a sense, there, I'll use the example that where we actually had this in the city of West Fargo, we purchased some property, we were gonna sell our new bus park. And um, that, at that time, it was a non-regular commercial. And so, the dedication economy is five percent and ten percent. And that five percent was applied directly against the acquisition of that parcel. And so, essentially what it did is it drove the cost of acquisition down. The city basically considered that as a, um, of use. There was no need of that dedication, which is what was going on in that parks, for example.
Right, right.
So, that was how that was applied. They expanded their definition of other um, facilities or other purpose to include the school district in that particular area. And this would probably be most similar to that in terms of, you asked, it's not expanding our site. It's not putting any condition on it in terms of how we would develop the site, although we could develop a, you know, a school park and, and playground. But that's, that's not a part of, kind of, the requirements of the purchase agreement. It really is just looking for that expanded definition.
It doesn't change the design of the park or the playground equipment or anything on that elementary site anyway?
No.
Cause it's gonna go with what you have there already.
What we would do is, once we, once this is part of the aluminum development process, we'd be communicating with the park district to determine really where those play amenities and the green spaces would be installed. We could all be right property, we could saddle property line on part of the parks property and on ours. We've got examples kind of all over the metro where we've done um, all on park property, the play amenities and our structures. Some where we've had half on the park property, half on the school district, and then we've got others where it's entirely contained on the school district property. So, it really just becomes a matter of um, what, how the neighborhood develops and where it makes the most sense for those amenities to occur.
Right, cause this isn't gonna happen next year.
No, we're talking about five.
Five years, five, six hours, so.
Yeah.
And Mark, what's a better analogy, do you know, like, Brooks Harbor, Brooks Harbor legacy, all those free elementary where you guys didn't cut into the park dedication or it's just a separate transaction? Cause the bus park, I get that, but I mean, all those other school sites, and I don't want to get into Fargo, but you know, it's, to my knowledge, all those elementary school sites, you guys didn't carve, all you have park dedication, you guys did your plat. And that's, that's what's different in this situation.
And this would be one of, just a couple of instances where the public dedication would include the school. Typically, just typically, the public dedication did not include the school. Most of them did only include the parks.
Right, this was kind of a unique opportunity to do this, if I remember correctly, we were talking about this a while back.
How much did you say you were gonna pay and move, how many acres was it?
Um.
Five point.
Five point seven.
Seven four, and I, and I guess on the developer's behalf, um, like what Mark was saying, um. Uh, the park and the school, once we get to that point, I mean, with, with us dedicating the thirteen point three seven acres now. Um, and it, and if the park district is worried about cash and loo for improvements, that's when we would apply that cash and loo. And we could have a nice park, work with the school, and it will take up, basically we'd have a seventeen acre park and the, or park space to do whatever. Whatever we, you know, the school district, the park district, and developer and the city council agreed on.
Do you don't have a value of that five point seven today?
Yeah, there's.
Yeah, we have a, we have a specific dollar value per square foot for dedication, it's, how much Brent?
Dollar fifty per square foot. Um, it does fluctuate based on result, if there's commercial or industrial or any other types, but for residential, it'd be a dollar fifty a square foot. So, it'd come out sixty, it'd come out sixty-five thousand, three hundred and ten dollars per acre.
You know, and part of the ten eight, you know, you know, the school lot was sold at a very good price and to make it work financially, part of it was to help. Or get this reduction on the four acres too, so.
And your four acres, you got a value of three hundred and fifty thousand, that one, do you need that, correct?
Correct, that's what you put for a value of three hundred and fifty, yeah. But it's a dollar is what the school, charging the school, it's just saying a value of three hundred and fifty for probably tax purposes, so.
Have you ever had with the park, I'm, I'm just listening as to the park district gets the land that you guys dedicated for three fifty? Do you ever pay the park district a total of fifty grand or whatever to do this transaction? We don't want it to happen.
No, they don't, I don't think, nobody does, it's.
Has that ever happened?
No. Um, and you know, and I guess um, part of the hangup last week too, in the park dis, or park board meeting, um. You know, Justin, you said that uh, the park with the taxes and specials, or we did a some calculations, it's around two thousand um, a year. Um, and I guess, you know, when we do move with improvements, I guess, that lot, it shouldn't be included in the assessment district when we're doing uh, some. it shouldn't be included in the assessment district when we're doing, uh, Southdale Park first. So, I mean, that won't go for, you know, a few years, so it'd be two thousand dollars essentially.
So they did their specials on a piece of land that we're not going to touch for four or five years, so you can look at.
You know, and.
Now, that's my point, right?
And the, the developer is, uh, you know, willing to, uh, work with Park District with like a donation or something like that too. We can talk, um, you know, for, um, for that, uh, for the specials and taxes. If they're still not comfortable with, with doing the thirteen acre dedication of park right now, you know. And my, my guess, as far as, I know was mentioned last week on that pocket park and getting the cash and loo for the thirty-four acres, um, developer, and I don't, you've mentioned it, Brent, um, about special assessing for the improvements for that small park.
One, one idea is if there are improvements would occur at the same time, so with that park, for example, and Justin and I haven't had a chance to touch base, but if that park would, the little pocket park, improvements would occur at the same time, the development's infrastructure, that way it's already in place. So we don't have a half acre park without improvement on it, so.
There'll be a couple, yeah, you probably won't save that grand, and that'll be, that'll be more than enough of that cash. They'll be doing it right there.
Yeah.
So.
You guys have any other questions on this one?
I don't have any other questions, it's just I'm honestly comparing these two potential flats, I know these are all potential. But you look at this one, with the, with the park being all kind of organized versus the other one where it looks like, and if I'm reading this wrong, the park's here and it's going down further. You've now taken these two areas and turned them into housing and a street, so you now have doubled or tripled the amount of lots that are in that area. Versus this one having some very nice cul-de-sacs and very nice sized, sized lots. I know this is a five.
The park wanted, didn't want this.
Okay.
Because that was a usable space, it was just a bucket of a long corridor and, and we could gain high specials on pretty much just.
Okay.
So that we could have dealt with it.
Yeah, that, the change, that's why I brought both, because that's what we went through, um, planning and with, with that concept, with the Olinio Park, and then we met, I think the, after it got approved for preliminary, the council, and met with Justin and Wade a couple times to get to the larger park the way we have it.
Because the park board must keep out the blank pieces, or maybe if you actually have like big community centers or like that, uh,
Sure, no, completely understand, it's just, it's just however the layout has changed, you're going to a lot more lots. And it's one of the things we want, we want a combination of lots, and now you have a large development that looks like pretty much all the lots are similar sized. Some may be deeper, but they're all similar width, and I know that's just something we have to take a look at when we get to that point of planning.
Those are going to change too, I mean, that, basically, everything out of the first phase, it's all just.
Concept.
Kind of concept, throw them in at fifty, fifty foot lots, and just to get an area planned, so we can figure out.
To kind of show where the park and the school, you know, like.
Yeah, that's basically what it's for, so, and see how that will interact with.
Just want to make sure we take that into consideration when we get to that point. Some of those, so, okay. I don't have anything else. Whether we choose to give them the.
Basically, we're looking for, if you want, what we can, but we're looking for, where are you at? Are you receptive to that four acres or not? Knowing a lot more information, I'm glad Chris was here to be able to elaborate some more. Speaking for, you know, he was able to speak directly for the developer, um, and Mark and Levi are here too. From what I have, from my notes here, would be a ten acre parcel. Four acres would be land dedication, for, uh, or comp towards land dedication. Roughly a thirteen acre park and a half acre park, and cash and loo of five point seven four acres. The cash and loo at, if it was at a dollar fifty, that would come out to, for that five point seven acres would be just a hair under three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, as I just wanted to recap, so everybody is aware, that's, that's at least what I have written down from the conversation, is that what you, Chris and council, that's where everybody is at?
Yep, and that's what, before. Tonight's meeting, I've kind of went through, um, and that's what we discussed, so. Um, as far as the cash and loo and how, and then, that's why I added all this stuff to the right, it's kind of small and I printed it on half size, but.
If there was any action taken by council, I would ask is about the four acre portion, or at the bat. We would include all this, typically in the developer's agreement, that would be area, Lucas would be working out the details, Lucas and I would be working out the details with the developer. And the Park District, but if you at least ha, if we know where you stand on that, that helps us go back and forth with the Park District of if there's any other variables that we need to know.
That's really the, the key element is the collaboration between, because collaboration between the school and the Park District to make sure that we all win out of this, right? So.
And then one last thing, so if you guys did take the four acres of credit, one thing that Ford had talked about last week was they might scale back that thirteen acres to maybe ten or eleven acres to get more funds for improvements for that site, so just keep that in mind too before we sign up this developer's agreement that.
But that's something would be a recommendation that you would make.
Right, you don't have to want on that, and I'm just, I'm just.
No, what you're stating then, is you're trying to get an agreement that if you scale it back to ten acres, he's going to add three more acres in cash and loo, correct?
Because the developer wants to get more land, correct, so check.
Correct, correct, but that's what would have to happen, right?
Right, so I'm just, I'm just being open that we might scale it down, maybe only ten or eleven acres to, to get more funds.
Sure. Yep, okay.
That's what we're looking for, if that's where you'd like to go, we can do that, or.
I'll motion that we approve the four acres.
Yep. Out in the second tab.
I have a question.
Okay, Dave.
He talked about, says that paying some special assessments on that four acres if needed. Would you put that in your agreement too? Because he talked about that, right?
No, there's no, he's, he's talking about special assessment related to, I think, that park.
Well, that, that would be, that would be negotiated between the Park Board, developer and say in the developer's agreement.
That's just the parking part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You've taken over specials on the four acres.
Yeah, school's taking the full ten acres.
Mister ten acre piece, we would assume that, um, pretty much.
Yep.
A line, so, right.
All right, so, Brian, you made a motion?
Or, Dave made the motion, I made the second, sorry.
I made the motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, those are unanimous, all right.
Thank you, sorry, understanding.
I got the, uh, I got the Tuesday meeting, and then I got a bunch of other meetings, I screwed up the time on this one, so, at least I made it.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and we'll move along to the number eleven here.
Okay.
All right.
The next item we have is, uh, fitting with having West Fargo School District here, is we've had a request, uh, petitioning requests for improvements of eighty-first Street. Uh, in meeting with the school district today, that may be changed, the name may change because of the alignment where eighty-first is. But anyways, they're requesting for improvements to, uh, have that street built, and it'd be the same routine that we went through for Southdale.
Which is the resolution?
Resolution.
Just so we can see how big this.
We'll identify the, identify the district in the proposed cost report, so. Same as.
Eight-four-seventh was in where the.
Eight-four-seventh was the.
High school and.
It would be the very south line, okay, yeah.
South side, I thought these were connected first.
Nope, yeah, so we built seventy-six, built sixty-third, now we're going to build eighty-first to the, back to the west.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
Get a motion on that one?
Some will.
Okay, Brian made a motion, can I get a second?
Aye.
Just give a second. Okay, I'll just, I'll roll call it, Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Hey, Jimmy, you got some more on your plate?
All right, the next one is a time extension request for Stormsboro Street Improvement, District number two thousand nineteen dash two, seventy-sixth Avenue and Roundabout. Northern Improvement was the prime, prime, is the prime contractor on District two thousand nineteen dash two. The completion date for the project was October twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. The contractor failed to meet the completion date as requesting a time extension of twenty-one days. They have sent an elaborate justification of their twenty-one days. This is based upon weather and excessive precipitation since July. Um, as we talked about earlier, there's a hundred and seventy-eight point five percent of the normal as shown below. Uh, their justification for twenty-one days is the DOT is allowing twenty-one calendar days due to adverse weather conditions this season. And, uh, they do state in here that it is an anomaly with the DOT allowing days for weather delay, because typically they don't do that, that's something that in their, in their spec book, it is, act of God.
But it's region wide, I mean, it's all statewide.
It is, it's very much region wide, and this is something, um, if, look, I also did put in my memo that the project did have an interim completion date for the Roundabout portion of the project, and they met that date. And they got seventeen open, and when they were supposed to, so. Um, right now, all the concrete work is done, all the sidewalk work is done. The only thing remaining is the, um, backfilling of the topsoil between the curbs around the sidewalk and that. Uh, the other thing is the asphalt on the frontage road. There is some concern about getting that in this year. It is, it does have a lift on it, but there is a patch area in there where KPH, due to some miscommunications on their part and some lack of planning, had to install a manhole fire hydrant, and that's gravel right now, and Northern has all intentions of filling that, but they're concerned with putting the final lift on when it's this cold, the equipment just, they said they have trouble with that, and I agree, that it's just, it's tough to do that, so. Um, that might carry over into twenty-twenty, but the bulk of the work should be complete here within the next. When I talked to him on Friday, I figured a good solid week, week and a half, they have it pretty well, pretty well done, so.
So, that's what I mean, that time, time extension twenty-one doesn't really close off the project, it really gets them to what they think they can get done by the end of the year.
Well, and that would be everything that is able to be constructed within the project specifications. If, if it, if it can't be done this year, it's due to, um, material, you know, temperature constraints or, uh, something to do with the material on it. It's not necessarily because they're not choosing to get it done, it's just.
Point of the matter is, is this holding up any other construction work or any work on the school itself?
No, no, it's not. The roadway's been striped, the roadway's been sealed, the system matter, getting the work done behind the curbs, and then it can be, it can be opened up and have traffic through it. Uh, the street lighting isn't up and running yet, it hasn't even started, but they can do that under traffic. That's something that's done fairly typically, done under, under traffic, with some temporary traffic control, so. I think this is one of the better justified, uh, time extensions, so.
Yeah, I mean, it makes perfect sense, but we know good and well that there's going to be another extension request sometime in November, you know, later in November, to finish out the work in the spring, right?
Yeah, because adults are going to be able to.
It, it's tough, it, there's just, they've got, I think their plant is pretty close to being shut down for the year.
Right.
Um, that's something we'll, we'll have to address, like, the project manager told me on Friday, they have all intentions of getting that, that done, but he said if the weather is a plain ice, we're not going to be able to do it, so. Um, like I said, I don't have any problem with the, with the twenty-one, with the twenty-one day extension on this one.
So the twenty-one days from October twenty-sixth basically gets up to like just before Thanksgiving.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay.
No, Thanksgiving's late this year.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's third, third week in.
We're going to be in the, middle of November.
We're already weakened by that.
The point, the point is, it's, it's not affecting anything, so I don't see a reason why we wouldn't approve this.
Yeah, motion to approve the time extension request?
Dave makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the second one we have is a time extension for the shared use path. This one, they are requesting a completion date of July one, twenty-twenty, due to the excessive moisture and inaccessibility to the clay that is to be provided by the city. So in order to construct this shared use path along the west side of Canal Route Seventeen, there needed to be some embankment placed. Plan for that embankment was to come from Lakeview Drive and Seventy-Ninth. Unfortunately, due to everything being wet getting to it and getting it to the point where it was usable, was a challenge for, for the contractor, at least getting to it was a, was to, was a challenge, it was out. It was, uh, off, south of Seventy-sixth Avenue, off of Lakeview Drive, Lakeview Drive is nothing but clay right now, and then Seventy-sixth Avenue and Northern Improvement trying to get their work done on it, KPH's trying to get their work done on it. So, um, moisture is another thing that they had in here, in order to get the embankment, we wanted to build it within specifications, which means there's a moisture content that has to be achieved. Cold weather is, and moisture, it just can't be done. Or it, it would be a challenge to get done, so, um, their request is for July first, twenty-twenty. The funds have to be spent by July eighth of twenty-twenty through the grant. I've expressed my concern with them about this numerous times about getting it done in that timeframe, so I'm still trying to push them to get something done on it this year, as far as being maybe that first block. But the concrete now is going to get to be a bit of a challenge, cold weather concreting is always, you know, is always something else too, so.
So, but how long is it, I mean, if you had perfect weather, how many days of work is this estimated to be?
They told me that to get it prepped and everything, it'd be less than two weeks.
Then why are we giving them to July one? We gotta get the money spent.
It's got to do with road, road restrictions and then getting their equipment and stuff here.
So, what's, what I mean is, is June fifteenth is, I mean, this is too close to being able to build everything and get everything done, that we lose that money.
I agree.
Can we come back and do a counter offer of, say, July, uh, June fifteenth, or something like that?
Or if they don't get it done, they cover the lost money.
Something along those lines, yeah.
So is July eighth is when that?
July eighth is when the, when the funding is.
Right.
And at least for the.
July in there and.
You have to process the gains.
I, I, yeah, exactly.
That's the concern.
Yeah.
Is gain their accounting, gain the invoice from them, and then processing it by the council, and then submitting that request reimbursement to the North Dakota Parks and Recs, that's very, very, very tight.
So that's why I don't think June fifteen.
Yeah, June fifteenth is probably more realistic.
It's not aligned with that.
Well, let's, 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 I'll counter back with that, and I don't think that, I think we don't, I think we just tell them, we'll give an extension to June fifteenth, because there has to be a timeframe in there to finish it and get it filed, otherwise there's a lack of funding.
No, one request that I know Jim and I were talking about is if, if they could complete even the southern portion, that would give a lot more comfort of them having the rest of their project trickle down, Jim, is there any?
But I don't see.
I don't see the benefit, I don't see, I'd rather wait.
But we've been bringing that up to them for quite a while, so.
Honestly, I don't see it, I'm getting used to that one for that.
Yeah.
So I make a motion to come back with a, uh, counter of a time extension at June fifteenth.
Yeah.
If that's a correct, don't make it a weekend.
Right, I was just going to say, let's look at that quick. Yeah, we probably want to make it the Friday before our council meeting, the middle of the month.
Twelve then. Twelve.
Do the thirteenth, I'm going to leave it to you guys, so.
He'll say Saturday.
Saturday.
Thirteen.
June thirteenth.
Okay.
Okay.
Do that, so June thirteenth will be the.
Motion. Second up.
Okay. Dave, Brian, make a. Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, so Jimmy, you get back with them.
I will do that.
Well, and worst case, I mean, what if it's a wet spring and you're just waiting for the dirt to dry, we just need to get the dirt from somewhere else.
Yeah.
And that's, this will give us a little time to identify that area, we've kind of had all our eggs in that one basket of, of the Seventy-Ninth and Lakeview Drive area, so, yeah.
Okay, so, let's go to the other one.
All right, while we have the geotechnical proposals, um, as you all maybe have noticed, the contractor did perform the work last, uh, Tuesday.
And it's still holding up well.
They milled up the existing, added some additional area to it, replated it, recompacted it, so, yeah, it's held up all week. The one thing that I will caution is keep the speeds reasonable on it. There's nothing that's going to blow apart faster than just racing down it.
I get people tailgating me all the time.
So, maintain the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, it's better, it's better for everyone, so. Um, but anyways, as part of a permanent solution to that, we discussed, uh, geotechnical proposals mainly to do with the area around the riverbank. The first part from the bridge, the bridge west, so. On your behalf, I solicited two proposals for geotechnical services, uh, Braun InterTech out of West Fargo and Terracan out of West Fargo. Used them both, their, uh, both of their, uh, proposals were dollars, were within six hundred dollars of each other, so. Braun's is nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, Geo, Terracan's was ninety thousand four hundred. Terracan's is a lump sum, Braun's is not to exceed the way they have it in here. Um, my recommendation would be to use Braun, mainly because Braun has performed a similar stability analysis along the Cheyenne River. And they did this in West Fargo two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, so I don't think the dollar amount is, is that big a deal to warn, going with the lesser one, I think there's a little bit, a little bit more, um, more with the, with the Braun proposal.
Now, are they still thinking they might be able to get this done as well?
Yeah, yeah, the, uh, the schedule here said that site reconnaissance would be performed within one week of authorization. Preliminary results provided two to three weeks, drill rig would be three to four weeks and field exploration one day. Uh, final report would be within the next five or six weeks, so that'd put us in right around where we want to be before Christmas time, before the year time, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and they, they both were fairly similar in their, in their. Um, yeah, and they, they both were fairly similar in their, in their, they go against each other a lot, so their proposals are pretty.
Yeah.
Pretty close, so. Um, I did talk to, uh, one of the guys in our office who does a lot of bridge work and he said that he would, he would go with the Braun one, the Braun proposal, so. That would be my recommendation.
Yeah.
So, and I think they're both, I think they're in line for the dollars. I don't think it's exorbitant at the moment, so I wouldn't have any problem approving one of these to move forward with the project.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Just one thing I would add, so you know where you'd be seeing this come from, how do we pay for it?
Yeah, that's what's mine.
Uh, we'd have to pay for it through the highway fund. Like I said before, you'd see a budget and then it's on the highway fund. Um, but if this project ended up being a special assessed project, we could still.
We would include those dollars in that special assessment.
Yeah, but we still have to pay the bills, so it would be front of the highway fund.
So it's a temporary, so we just keep, hold on.
And then if the city, if the city.
So to speak.
Yeah, so if we did a special assessment project, it could be paid back by a special assessment. Or if the city does partake with costs tied to the improvements, then we just can't eat the cost with the highway fund.
So, I'll make a motion to approve from InterTech for doing a Geo-Technical Survey Funding from the Highway Fund. Okay?
Sounds good, uh, got a second on that?
Second.
Chelsea does a second. All right. Uh, Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
All right, let's get it done, Jim, see what we got to work with out there.
All right. Next on the agenda is our project status reports. We'll hit the high points here. Submitted all the paperwork to the Department of Environmental Quality on the water meters, so now we just have to wait for the final reimbursement. I'll prepare that now that all the final work has been accepted by the Department of Environmental Quality.
Um. So they've all, they've accepted everything?
They've accepted the, the, um. What was that?
We're just waiting for payment from them?
We're waiting for the last tally of the bills for, uh, reimbursement from them. So, um, Northwest Southwood Drive, the only, this one has been completed for a while, but we just need to do a final project initiation and acceptance. Just to drive through basically, Park and Rec, we went over that. Terra Gardens, there's a minimal punch list remaining, items remaining. Um, they're our weather dependent, so we might accept that with the exception to those items. We'll have that at the next council meeting. Wall Avenue, we did that. So Lakeview Drive and Seventy-Ninth projects about thirty-nine percent complete. Underground is, was ninety-five percent complete. When I did this report, it's probably closer to ninety-eight, ninety-nine right now. Got a little run of sanitized sewer to put in adjacent to Seventy-Sixth Avenue, but they're waiting for the corn to come off before they do that. It's enough. It will be in, it will be in an easement spot, so. Um, Seventy-Sixth Avenue Roundabout project's ninety-one percent complete. Um, backfilling, like we said earlier about, we talked about the time extension, that work remains. Sixty-third, the same project, thirty-nine percent complete, earthwork continues. So Lakeview Seventy-Ninth and Sixty-third, there was never the intention of getting those paved this year. That was always when we were gonna prep it and then let it sit through the winter and then pave it next year. June of twenty twenty is the completion on that. There are some kinda not real great soils on the west half of the project, so in order to get that through the winter, get a, get a freeze saw through it. Lot of silty, silty sand and high, high water table, so that was always the plan on that. Visto Industrial Edition, the project is twenty-four percent complete, working on the underground, the water and the sewer. Connection to the existing water mains are complete. They did the last one last Friday, I believe. That's going pretty well considering how wet it was, it took them a long time.
Yeah, they were playing in the mud.
They were.
Good breeze.
And, uh, I don't know if you happened to see the, uh, parade of equipment this morning out there, but they.
They were washing it.
They had to wash it to get the mud off, so it wouldn't freeze.
Yes.
On the equipment. Yeah, they lined everything up along Underth Avenue.
Mm-hmm, you was out there giving it a good spray.
Looked like a cat dealership.
So are they, are they projecting to get all the underwork underground?
I don't think, they're gonna get all the underwork done, underground work done. And they're getting the roads built from the west to the east.
Yeah.
There is a, um, uh, an, an industry or a commercial building being built on the first lot in the new addition, so they've got the road up to that. And then they'll keep going, they're repairing the road and heading east with that, so allowing some, some of those commercial buildings to be constructed on over the winter. I think it's just the one in the, that's in the, that's being built that, I think it's cabinets, isn't it?
I don't know if Tom had.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Do they have a permit?
They do, pretty sure.
Okay, uh.
Oh, Visto is a.
Has it been through design review or planning zoning?
No, it has not gone to the planning zoning yet.
Okay.
It's on radar to come to the planning zoning for a design review.
Yeah, that happened before permits?
They, I don't believe they have their permit.
I don't.
No, they don't have their permit yet.
Okay.
Cause they've been asking to get their permit, it has not gone. So, yeah, that one would be going to planning commission prior at the next meeting or thereafter. So, and it's their design review.
Okay, um, Cub Creek, project is sixty-five point six percent complete.
Point six?
Well, I'm an engineer, so, uh, they're still working on Lomar work, the underground piping is complete. Uh, last week I was told by the contractor that they are gonna try to get curb and gutter and pave again this year, just whether it won't, won't allow it, so. Um, that is probably not a bad thing, there's a lot of film that's going on that site to have it to go through a freeze saw is probably not too bad, so.
Yep.
Um, Maple Lakes is still working with the developer, they're gonna want to bid it this winter, probably after the new year. Um, still dealing with lift station four, city's gonna pig out the four, so put a plug in the line and force it through to clean the pipe. Right now, the pump is operating outside of its operating range. It's pushing up against more head than what it's designed to, so it's not real efficient.
The, the Santa Cary?
Yeah, in Chestnut. So there's something impeding the flow along that line, so we're working with Adam, he's gonna get some, some foam pigs that you put in there and force through and it cleans the, the sides of the pipe and it forces it out, so. Um, it's another one of those things where it runs constantly with all the sump pumps and all the groundwater getting into it and getting the, getting in there and actually being able to access it and do it is kinda been a challenge, but it's.
So plan to do that before this fall?
Yeah, sure want to, okay. I talked to Adam the other day about it and he just got back from vacation, so he wasn't, you know, on that. Uh, Third and Fourth Street Drainage Improvements, contractor started today. Uh, they were to put mud mats down on the east side of it to allow access to, to Fourth Street. That work should be done, should be done this week. So if the farms are to talk about, lost their fifth. Um, the developer has received his four wait for work. We have to have a, have a meeting Wednesday with him on going forward with that. Prairie View overlays complete, we just need to do initiation of project acceptance letter on that. And then eighty-first street, we talked about that, the schools. Schools got the decisions on that, so that's, that's all I had on that aspect. We tou, we touched on River's Edge, what I know about River's Edge. Oh, the TA grant, Transplantation Alternative Grant, I worked with Chelsea on, on, uh, what we had submitted in the past. She's working on getting new support letters. And the area where we're gonna put in for this year is a continuation of the last one, starting at Lakeview Drive, eighty-first Bridge Drive, whatever you wanna call it, and going north to the roundabout, so we would have that whole corridor and then from the school, all the schools would be connected. And then we would get up to Seventy-Sixth Avenue, up to the roundabout, then we can decide if we wanna go north or west. We'll have a shared use path on the south side of Seventy-Sixth, so we'll kinda get all that, start tying all that together, so. We'll get that done and get the letters, we'll get it put together, so. That's that.
Okay. Anybody got questions or?
Nope.
Okay.
All right, Jim, thank you much.
Brian?
Okay, just, uh, brief recap, or recap of a couple items. I touched base on one, the flags, appreciate Lions Club and Legion for participating in the flags and making that happen. Uh, those are expected to go up Wednesday along County Road Seventeen, working our way north as much as we can, uh, towards the roundabout there. Uh, that'd be in honor for Veterans Day, right after Veterans Day or day or two afterwards, we'll take those down and start putting up Christmas lights. We got Christmas lights in, uh, it's five, I believe they're five foot, ninety bulb snowflakes, which you saw a picture of at the last council meeting. Uh, they came in very quickly, we have banners on order also, uh, those are anticipated to come in mid-November, so. Uh, once we get those in, we'll put those up too. Uh, the intention is to add the snowflakes more in the south end and that, as you're in kinda the main part of, of course, right now we're at Elevator, Biggers, uh, Wall Avenue, Casey's. That stretch would have the snowflakes, uh, going farther north, you'd see the banners. And in the future, uh, we'd like to expand that or we could have banner and snowflake or the combinations thereof. So we're working towards getting those put up, our public works guys are working towards getting those put up. Uh, also, the Lions Club did to, or did decide to participate in acquiring the Christmas decorations and banners. Uh, they put fourteen thousand dollars towards that purchase, so very thankful for that too. Um, good to see groups like that putting things towards the community and help make it, you know, better and get the community involved a little bit. So, it'll lighten up the corridor along County Road Seventeen quite a bit here over the next week or two.
So we're not gonna integrate the old Christmas decorations anywhere else?
We've.
Disappointed?
No.
If we don't get in on a few of the.
Stella, yeah, Stella.
I think we need to get new ones that look like.
Oh, okay.
We could find a way to update it. It could be if you'd like, but, yeah.
We'll put those up out of Maple.
Yeah. Just make a scavenger hunt to find all the old decorations.
Yeah, I'll take one for mine.
Yeah. Um, as, as we know, at the last, um, council meeting, Matt, uh, moved on to another position. Uh, we've been able to fill that position. Uh, the individual is Barrett Voight, he's from the county, works for the county right now. Uh, he'll be starting, our start date for him will be the twenty-fifth of November. Uh, Barrett comes to us with quite a bit of experience with him planning.
It's like the day before Thanksgiving.
Yep, that's. When we were able to get him in here, uh, but we're gonna work with the county to make sure there's a smooth transition and it doesn't impact them too difficult. We wanna be good partners with them, uh, so we're working that out with the county also. Uh, also, council approved a second building inspector position that was filled with a individual that's been doing on-call inspections for us, Don Horse, so he has quite a bit of familiarity with the area and our process for building inspections. Uh, his name's Keith O'Shine, and he has a degree in construction management and about six years of building inspector experience with, uh, from being with Moore Engineering. He's been construction trade for quite a while before that, but comes with at least six years' experience from the inspection side for Moore Engineering, so. Uh, excited to have him start, or both of them start. Keith's first, first date will be November eighteenth, so we're looking forward to having both those individuals on board and help us, uh, hit for running again, cause we have plenty of work for them to be working on, so, yeah. Um, let's see, that's the last of the general update. The last item I have is we received a request from the diversion authority, uh, to assist in a land acquisition. Uh, there are some parcels of land that are up for auction on November nineteenth due to delinquency in payment of property taxes. And one parcel of land is of interest to the diversion authority for environmental mitigation. Uh, based on North Coast Century Code, and Lucas can expand on this, I'll read, just answer it from a letter they received just, just late last week from the diversion authority. Talking about why, or the process that we go through, but having a city do that acquisition is a lot cleaner process for the, for the diversion authority, and they would reimburse us our costs tied to that. So if we go and purchase that property on auction for them, they would buy after three months, then we would sell the property to them and it would be a cleaner process for them. Uh, what they talked about here, uh, North Coast Cent, North Coast Lock Rate's an efficient method for clearing tax title issues that the property is acquired by the city in which the property is located and the city remains in possession of the property for a minimum of three months. It's on North Coast Century Code fifty-seven dash twenty-eight dash nineteen point one. Upon obtaining the property from the county for the amount of the opening bid, entering into possession of and holding the property for the statutory three months and issuing affidavit to the effective, or to the effect as contemplated under North Coast Century Code fifty-seven twenty-eight nineteen point one, the Cass County Joint Water Resource District proposes to then purchase the property from the city of horse for the price paid by the city by quit clean deed. The Cass County Joint Water Resource District would also be responsible for drafting and necessary, drafting necessary quit clean deed, affidavit, and other closing documents. So basically, they would ask us to go do the purchase and then after the three-month period it's passed, they would purchase the property from.
Depending on the value of that purchase though, that could be a significant amount.
It could be and we would be passing the cost.
Yeah, they're just looking to reimburse a cost, but, uh, for the money, there's gotta be some interest-bearing element to this as well.
And Lucas could expand on the legal side of it if I missed anything on there, but.
Basically, they just need you to buy the property, then three months, sell it back to them, or sell it to them.
Because the city has the first right to it.
But is this in the city annex? I mean, is this in the city proper or at ET?
It's in city limits, city limits.
Oh, it is in city limits.
Yeah.
Okay, so it, then it makes sense, right? I was gonna, if it's in the ET, we don't really have that much jurisdiction out there.
And if you had more, you know, questions directly for the diversion authority, uh, Joel Paulson, their executive director, I can't call him, he's, he's gone hold if I need to, or he's on standby if I need to call him if you had any questions directly for, uh, the diversion authority in regards to that, but.
So who actually goes through and does that purchase?
So basically, what the council needs to do is just a motion directly Brent to be your authorized to bid on the property on November fifteenth.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
And then in three months' time, we'll come back to you and say a motion to dispose of that property to Cass County Joint.
I mean, what, what are we, what are we talking about for?
The minimum bid for this property was one thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
Per acre?
For the property.
A thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's not a.
I was thinking it was like a few hundred dollars or something like that, too.
This is just a small.
That's it?
This is a small parcel.
Okay, then that's, okay.
Next to nothing.
Low risk.
Yeah, it's, there's.
It's a chunk of land that a developer had bought and it's non-developable, so they developed a portion that they could develop and then let the rest go on the tax bill a bit.
Okay.
Yeah. And they, they look from, was expressed to me by, uh, Ms. Paulson, Mr. Paulson was, uh, really, they're just looking at this from a angle of environmental mitigation for the diversion authority, so.
I'll make a motion to authorize Brent to proceed with, um, the propos, or bidding on the land acquisition for proposed resale to the diversion authority on November nineteenth.
On November nineteenth.
On November nineteenth. Oh, yes, on that date.
Second.
Okay.
Dave does his second, Brian does his first. Okay, so Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
All right. Okay, Brian, you can stand here and take care of that for us.
Yep.
All right, so on the portfolio reports, I have nothing at this point, at this time.
Really?
What?
Yeah, what?
So is John, John is ready to get in. All right, Dave, what do you got, anything?
Well, I, he stole my thunder, it's the tires that we, that we did this week.
Thank you for the work on that, appreciate.
Corey helped as well.
And I know it's a big, big deal to get, fill those positions so quickly, so that's awesome.
Two very good candidates that kind of came out of the works, so they're good enough to, to strike a little iron and talk, so.
So goodness.
That's it?
That's it. Got it. Chelsea, what do you got?
Um, well, the horse happenings came out.
Looked good.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Very nice.
And so we're jumping right on the next issue because we wanna keep on every two months on the first is our goal. Shelby's been very busy, especially with employees, you know, gone, so. But that's our plan, January first.
Cool.
That's attorney next. All right, great. Brian, we, uh.
Um, I, I was, I'm gonna ask a question about the, the building permit backlog, and I think you guys already had talked about that, just from some of the discussions we've had already, I mean, you guys are working through that, I mean, is, is.
We, we've had a backlog, uh, currently our backlog is two permits, two permits that came, two or three, two permits that came in. We've had a backlog, uh, currently our backlog is two permits, two permits that came, two or three, two permits that came in last week, end of last week. We had one other permit that has significant backlog that we're looking at, but all other permits that we've had a backlog on, from what I've seen, we're caught up on. So we worked with Moore Engineering to get us caught up, and there is some communication, uh, challenges between.
Sure.
Staff and the, if you're interested for what ones to be done, so, but we've worked through those. Now we have a handful of permits, we have about seven or eight permits sitting on the desk waiting for builders to come pick up and pay their fees for it.
So it's back in there for, so to speak?
Yeah, uh, if there are any delays now, beyond that, it's due to either has to go through, we have one permit has to go through a design review, or we're missing information from the builder.
But in essence, we're, we're able, I mean, we've got more helping us with moving the backlog along, so it's not held up.
Yes. Yep.
Okay, that's all, great, that's all I have.
Okay. That's it, I'm gonna enter the motion, who's here?
Come on.
Chelsea does it? Chelsea and Dave, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are done.